We got 6:03. So at this time, we will call our August 17 meeting to order and move forward. As you, thanks everyone that's been here before, what we always like to start it out with is, of course, Amon Hassan. And so if you would, like I said, would you please stand and vote for this? And our pleasure is to return to our vice chair, Mr. Tommy Kay.
He said, "Old man," a while ago.
So try to clear it up a little bit.
Uh, we do, I mean, we saw what happened to our Air Force young man of the day that was parachuting, got killed, and then the Marines over in Tennessee. Uh, you don't have to be in a war zone to really be in harm's way. So, uh, we always like to think of our veterans, uh, bow our heads, say, "Amen." So. I will say, if you please, we can come. I'm good. They wrote down for me stuff. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. And we'll be seated. Move on. Uh, first on the agenda, and for those, if you would like to get a copy of our agenda, there is still some there on the corner of the table. Please have yourselves, like I said, all along. First is the approval of minutes. We had our minutes from our regular meeting on July 27th. Also, a work session, and then we had some, as we expected, we took care of on August 6th. All the board members had a chance to review those. Were there any corrections, changes?
I make the motion, we approved the minutes.
I most approve. Right here, second. Second. Have motion, second. All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, you oppose, so moved. Next, we need, I think we need to, starting at the beginning, as always, to us, we need to have the board member present, absolutely need to excuse that Ms. McCall is not able to be with us tonight. So, I'd entertain a motion that we excuse Stephanie from the meeting. Motion to excuse. Right here, second.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, you oppose, so moved. Next is the adoption of our agenda, and I understand there may be some changes. So I'll look to you, Mr. Bell. You go, please.
Under section four, personnel, uh, part A, I need to add the resignation of Billy Kimsey, math teacher at Macon Middle School, effective today. Under section B, new personnel need to add Megan McGinnis, math teacher, Macon Middle School, effective 8/18.
Sorry, is that math teacher?
Math teacher, she should be replacing Billy Kimsey.
Okay.
Also, Lynn Bronson, interim guidance counselor, Macon Middle School. Still in that same section, but under custodians, Nathan Smathers, custodian, Highlands. Mr. Chairman, that's it.
So we have, let me just repeat those, Mr. Bell, if you don't mind, so we have Billy Kimsey.
Oh, okay. I got prompted. Uh, child nutrition did have, uh, one other person that had under, uh, child nutrition, that is Janelle.
What is, is this a change in status, or?
No, this is new hire.
New hire?
New hire under substitutes, which is, that would be section E, child nutrition, Janelle Monte Leone, M-O-N-T-E-L-I-O-N-E. That is child nutrition.
I just repeat, so under A, personnel, we have Billy Kimsey's resignation, effective today. New personnel, we have Megan McGinnis, math teacher, replace Mr. Kimsey. We have Lynn Bronson, who is going to be our interim guidance counselor at M-M Macon Middle. Nathan Smathers, or is it Nathan? Am I right there, right?
Yes.
Will be a custodial at Highland School. And then Janelle Monte Leone would be child nutrition, and she is for there.
Yes.
Any other changes?
Excuse me, the emergency plan?
Yes.
We need to discuss that.
No change. So we will be adding, for all the media here who loves us so much to do this, we will be going into closed session at the end, and we'll let you know what it's going to be about, because we talked about that, so. Any other changes? If not, I hear a motion that we adopt the agenda with the changes that Mr. Bell dropped to us, and with the fact that we will be going into closed session. Motion to approve. Second, to adopt the changes. All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, you oppose, so moved. Very good. Next is one of the highlights, we always love going into this, is our spotlight and people programs. Dr. Baldwin, I'll turn it over to you, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we would like to recognize the American Legion and the American Legion Women's Auxiliary. The American Legion Boys State and American Legion Auxiliary Girls State are the premier programs for teaching how government works while developing leadership skills and an appreciation for citizens' rights. Participants in the program for off, uh, run for office, learn public speaking, and enforce laws, and actively participate in all phases of creating and running a working government during a fun summer program. Participants also, uh, meet students from across our state and develop lifelong friendships. And most importantly, the parents, colleges and universities look to attend these, uh, Boys and Girls State, with preference when selecting scholarships or offering attendance, admission. At this time, I would like to ask that the representatives from American Legion come forward, and also, I'd like to ask the guidance counselors, Ms. Kathy Breelove and Mr. Jim Tub from Franklin High School, to make a few comments about how important American Legion is and how important, uh, Boys and Girls State are at our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin, for allowing us to do this. I just, um, asked if I could just have a few moments along with Mr. Taylor. Um, this being my final year, I, I'm not sure I'd have another opportunity, but I remember when I took over for my predecessor, Mr. Tinsley, in 2002, he was rapid-fire telling me everything I needed to know, and I was writing down Boys State, Girls State, and then he said, "Write down, this will be one of your favorite things." Well, he was wrong, because it was my favorite thing, and is my favorite thing, and the thing I shall miss probably the most. So I just want to say, your, um, contributions to our students, we cannot thank you enough. Um, it is just phenomenal, year after year. Um, I know the women and men, women send two or three, and the, uh, men send five or six, every single year, probably since the 1940s, I do believe. And it is, um, just, and it's something that, um, I have, it's been verified to me by admissions committees, that they think that this would rank above almost class president or most valuable player, because of how it, how involved you are in creating a community from scratch, and a government from scratch. And it, um, I tell the kids, um, I want to, if you're a Boys or Girls Stater, I want to see your resumes before you send them in, because I want to be sure it's in its proper place. So, I'm going to let Mr. Taylor. I have been traditionally responsible for Girls State, and Mr. Taylor, my coworker, has been responsible for Boys State, and I'll let him say a few words, too. Thank you.
This is my first year working with the American Legion, and it's been a pleasure. Um, I heard from some of our representatives from Franklin High School that came back from Boys State, and I know they had a great time and, and really learned, and got some great experiences from that. So I just want to thank you, and I look forward to working with you for the years to come. So thank you so much.
I just want to say one more thing, as usual. I can't, I'm sorry, it's just, I did a little research on this, because I, I find the whole concept very, very fascinating. Uh, it, there wasn't such an animal, I don't guess, I went to a private school in Miami, and it just, you know, it's, I'm, I'm learning so much, I wish that we had had such an opportunity. Um, almost every president who has served, President of the United States who has served since Boys and Girls State, um, its inception, has been a Boys Stater. And I, I would say every female that has been the President. But I will say, many state senators and many women, let's see, political correctness here, Hillary Clinton, Condoleezza Rice, Girls Staters. You know, people that have made a significant impact in government. And where did they learn? Did I handle that right, Terry Bell? And Terry Bell, was it Boys State? Anybody in here a Boys or a Girls Stater? Raise your hand.
My son was a Boys.
Boys State.
Jason was a Boys State.
Wonderful.
And my son attended this summer, so.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful.
It was a highlight of my high school career when I went to Boys State.
And we couldn't have done it without Kathy.
No, I went down to 40.
1942.
It was in the 60s, though.
But thank you all again.
I'd ask you to come over and recite this certificate, and if you wouldn't mind, introduce yourself.
My name is Robert Slacer. I went to Boys State in Vermont in 1955, and I really believe it's helped me through my life, as far as being here. I didn't realize I'd been doing this so many years, you said, when you started, because I remember Mr. Tinsley. But, uh, it's these people here that make the big difference. We take the papers to school, we go talk to them, but it's the school that selects the boys that are going, and we get to top the crop. Would I say that? I mean that. Now, the pleasure's a word for you, too.
Karen here, Chairperson of Girls State. And we couldn't have done it without Kathy. My, my oldest son, Cam Pibio, was a Boys Stater. And thank you all so much, and we'll keep up the good work, okay? We sent five this year, five girls.
I'm Louise Womack, and I'm the president of the American Legion Auxiliary, Unit 108, and it's been our privilege to work with all of you and, uh, send, I think we sent about five girls this year. So we're very happy, maybe next year we can send more, and we appreciate your help, and thank you.
My name is Jim McGill. I'm the commander of the American Legion, Post 108. On behalf of the 480 members of the American Legion, thank you for this opportunity to come and talk about one of our programs. We, uh, we have many programs I've participated in, and most people I'll ever hear about, never know about. The little medallions that we pass out for the school awards, or the times that we bring Macon Middle flags, and have them hang them in their, um, classrooms. The vet supper over at the Mantha Halen School, that's a highlight of anybody's winter right there. Um, we also do, uh, along with Boys State and Girls State, we do supporting, um, Boy Scout troop. I look for a Girl Scout troop to be involved with, but they don't come into fruition. On 13th of October, uh, we will have a recognition of the Girls State and Boys State, and the law enforcement, and EMT of the year at our post at 7:00 p.m. And I want everybody to go in line. And, uh, I just want to say, thanks for having Scott tonight.
Thank you.
By the way, he was armed, not air force, the guy that died, blowing the night's horn.
That's right. That's right.
I have Navy, you look.
Everyone hold that again.
If I could say one thing, it's been my privilege to attend the presentation where the students go, and these wonderful people recognize them, and to listen to the students talk about the experience that they've had, and echo what Mr. Bell is saying, it's a life-changing event for students and a lot of people. We can't thank you enough, and, and it's, when you can affect the life of beyond person, there's no greater, no cause, so thank you very much.
Is, and one little P.S. here, real quick, Bob Slacer has been doing this for about 40 million years now. A long time. He got married again recently, and is thinking about moving to Alabama.
No.
Vermont, or somewhere.
Maybe the weather's gonna help.
Anyway, he's thinking about moving away. I personally wanted to thank the public for all his long years of work, and work for our guidance counselors. Thank you. Would you mind coming up, please, with me?
Thank you.
Oh, no, we don't need to.
Call people in the back, that's where we all.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to fuck with my mouth.
Here we go, in front of all your listeners. Sorry, it's kind of a fun job.
Uh, the American Legion signed in.
That's what came in, so. As always, I don't, I think I recognize everyone here, but does anyone here like to address the board at this time, for, during the time of public comment? Moving on, uh, informational items, uh, I don't know if we approved those. Number three is to the transfers. I think in your packet, there's a name, which is given as for transfer, and everybody can see that, and that's part of, along with the other trips, uh, so. And what I'd like to do then is, and all the board members have also had a chance to look at the fundraising requests, are there any questions, or rather than making our, for instance, stand up and go through each one of them, unless you would like, if there are any questions, I prefer just to go ahead and, unless there are questions, just approve item three in mass.
I want the motion that we approve, that we all of item three, and we're here.
Motion to approve all of item three, put our, our fundraising requests, overnight trips, and transfers. Go right here, second. Thank you. Motion, second. All in favor, say by saying aye. Aye, you oppose, so moved. Personnel, I think we've gone there. Does anyone have any questions of, uh, Mr. Bell? Quickly noted additions, were there any questions anyone had? About Tim?
Who accepts personnel as presented?
How much we, kind of, if I were personnel presented, do I hear a second? No, motion, second. We accept it as presented, all in favor, say by saying aye. Aye, you oppose, so moved. Moving on, policy, Just For Kids Therapy Contract, Paula?
And that's our physical therapy contract, um, just asking to renew it for the coming school year. And, um, this next one is, um, to renew a contract we had last school year for a student that has to have nursing services.
Sorry about that. Well, bear with us a little bit.
Well, that's okay, because they have, I don't think we need to put those up anyway.
No, this one, just.
Yeah, one of them has a student name in it.
Right, so, okay.
I make a motion that we approve the Just For Kids Therapy Contract.
Motion, second. All in favor, say by saying aye. Aye, you oppose, so moved. In-school nursing contract, Paula?
Um, it's also a renewal of a contract we had last year, um, for us, I just lost the name of it. A New Hope out of Asheville provides a nurse for a student that has to have a one-on-one nurse.
Who accepts the contract?
Motion to accept the contract, you're here, second. No motion, second. All in favor, say by saying aye. Aye, you oppose, so moved. Land engineer, M-O-U.
Yeah, this is, this is a, the same, uh, land engineer memorandum of agreement we have with the surrounding, uh, D.C. Ad Dec counties for the, uh, for the land engineer position, that's their, uh, their, my, that's the position, uh, they split five ways for all five counties, and that's just the same paper we have.
Because every year, the same. He's turning, asking a question.
Al Paul is from.
Every way I've pledged, always pick on that. Any questions? We have a motion from Mr. Kay that we accept, go right here, second. Motion, second. We accept it presented, all in favor, say by saying aye. Aye, you oppose, so moved. Mr. Bell, our 2015-16 athletic drug testing contract?
This is the same, uh, contract that we all had, uh, last year, uh, with Bruce McCollum. Uh, as I told you, uh, earlier, uh, we will be doing, the only increase that you will see, or as you will see, is that we are now going to do a 10% of random test each season. Uh, so, in the fall sports, sometime during the fall sports season, then we'll randomly choose 10% of the, just say athletes, do random, a random drug test.
Not for a sport, but 10% of the public.
No, no, the whole, the whole group, all sports. And that's the way the policy is written, it's in the, uh, policy book, and so, we're just lining it up so that we are doing exactly what we are saying that we should be doing.
And Terry, I just want to point out, this is Exhibit A, and I think I remember taking their proposed contract and just sort of tacking it onto ours, so what, yeah, I'm going to make myself mentally get you that.
Right, right.
It's a big design.
This, now, 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 didn't you tell us, so Terry, there was one change about the pers, what was it, the amount of a trace, where it's a register positive?
Right, uh, if.
That's part of the, that's part of the contract also, in the language, right? Or?
I don't, no, it's not in the contract, it's, it's not in the language, it's the contract.
Okay, it's just that it's just their standard, that's what they do now.
Right, that's what, what.
We, we've set the standard higher.
We've set the standard higher.
That's what, what we do, we set higher than what we have.
You know, first, we, we test positive, trace element, you know, a trace residue.
Right.
Then we count that as a positive.
Their, their guidelines were set at DOT?
Yeah, it's DOT, under C.D.L., licensing, and, uh, so there is a.
There's a, there's a visible amount.
Right.
Yeah.
In that situation, we lower it towards, it's, uh, minimum.
Right.
Which is good.
Which lines up with other counties around us.
Got you.
$0 means none of that.
So I just wanted, I didn't, I remember if I looked, I didn't see that in there, but it is part of what they'll be giving to us.
There's no threshold, we, we sat down with him, and there was a threshold.
Any other questions? All right, once, please, the board, I entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve the contract presented, do I hear a second? Second. Motion, second. We approve, all in favor, say by saying aye. Aye, you oppose, so moved. Very good. Dr. Hennig, our, our policy manual service.
Mr. Chairman, I understand the board, uh, wanted to see the options that are offered by School Board Association for policy updating, uh, services. The, uh, this first page has actually the, the web hosting, uh, rates. I don't think that's as big a deal as if you look at the next page over. And that's, got the three options, and again, the options basically are, one, to have me assist you, uh, along the way. School Board Association's biggest thing at that point is to take the existing policy manual, compare it side by side with their suggested policy manual, their, their model policy manual, and say, "Here are the things you really have to have by law, and you don't, here are the things you have that are optional, and they're fine, you can keep them the way you want." And I can help you, as staff, win over that down. And I'm, I'm confident we can get this updated, and I think it's going to be a slow process over about a year, but not something that's going to take, and nor does it, not in my time, to do. Uh, so that's one option. That, that rate went up on July 1st, and is now 5,500 dollars, so they throw in 500 dollars. Uh, and options two and three, as you'll recall, have a lot more heavy lifting by School Boards Association in terms of the rewriting the manual to, to their, closer to their model. Uh, again, I think if it's the board's will to do any one of these, we can go with option one, and it'll get us where we need to be, and be the most reasonable way to do it.
Got some questions to look at, you said, putting on the spot, do you feel like, because you know how I am, like, say, any of that, so, if you feel like that will protect us, the first option, and base them your advice, good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we found out when we had, we were sitting for those to meet, I think some of you here, the board met, and we reviewed it, and we found out very quickly, uh, might be a bad idea to get some expert advice on it, but that's just, oh, man.
It's, it's a lot.
Well, we've still got the options, we can go what John's recommended, or it's up to the board, if you prefer.
I think, I think we should go with Dr. Innes.
That, that $500 is $10,000.
See, no, I cannot find my prescription. Anyway.
In other words, John, in other words, you feel good with you combining with the School Board Association, the one for 5,500 is patient, then.
They, they are very used to taking a policy manual that is not lined up with their Mahala policy, and saying, and do, like I said, they call it a conversion table, that says, "Okay, this is what you have to have, and don't, this is what you have that's a little more different than we have, and you could change this up to you." That's, that's what they will provide. Uh, and as I think you all saw, it'll take 5,500 dollars for an attorney to go through and do that, is going to be pretty reasonable, because it's many, many hours just to do that. Over the course of, I think it'll be, you know, if we, if we end this school year, that we just are about to start with a new manual, and it would be my intent, and I think the best way to do this is to go through and adopt policies we're going to change, to adopt them all at once toward the end of the year when they're all ready, I can help you walk through what they mean, what, and we can do that on a meeting-by-meeting sort basis, so.
Those changes to be made, then you would suggest those changes to us, and we would approve them, and you would.
Yes, yes. And I, I do that with other clients that have, that are into, are following this exact plan, where they, School Board Association has given them a suggestion, but they say, "Well, we don't like how that sounds." And I can help you figure out, do you have to have it that way, or what else, how, how might you approach it?
John, could I ask you one other question? As part of what you'll be doing for us, you'll have the ability to look at it, and if there's anything out there you feel more pressing, and you'll be able to kind of outward bring that to us as quickly as possible, correct?
Yes, and there's nothing.
If you see something that you feel like we need to act on, then you'll be able to do that for us.
You're going to adopt now, yes, right, yeah, we can do that.
John, will this include additional policies?
Than we have now? Oh, yes.
Yeah. That's what we manage, is really, the policy, and then compare it to other policy management, notice that there were things like ADA, and homeless, that policy, that we don't have currently.
There, there are a lot of policies like that, and those are great examples, where we are following the law, but we don't necessarily have it in our policy.
So we need to have it in there.
I, yes, because if you ever get.
I'm looking at, say, yes, we need to have it in there.
If you ever get sued over it, you're going to want to be.
Carol was sitting in here, and I, I'm not putting her on the spot, but she had, we, I won't say about that second, I was a little, she caught my attention very quickly, let's put it that way, so I think we did look at all of it, very good.
They just, they're, they're, they've just completed, I think, completed the, the policy book for Southwestern Community College, or is it still?
I think in that, we were making that a little more out of whole cloth, because there's no big model policy, like, script. But they, they cleaned some language up, that.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's what we said. So, I think, Missy, you made the motion, did I hear right?
So I make a motion that we, as a board, go with option one for the policy manual service.
At the cost of $500.
Yeah, I was ready to talk.
Motion, go right here, second.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say by saying aye. Aye, you oppose, so moved. Very good. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Read to achieve, wrap-up. Summer camp.
Summer camp this year for Read to Achieve was very successful. I think the kids had a wonderful summer. Um, I would like to preface our report, though, by publicly thanking Kim Burnett, and Carrie Houghton, and Lynn Bronson. She was a volunteer that came and worked with our teachers, with our students, every day, as a volunteer. Um, I think it was very successful this year. We were able to not only work on literacy skills with our kids, but we were able to integrate some seeds of science, a science kit that not only, uh, worked with our reading literacy, but build in some basic concepts. And as you can see at our last board meeting, it was a fun time for our children. Um, as a wrap-up, we had 32 students that were invited to attend. Um, summer camp was held for 16 days. The state law requires, um, 72 hours of instruction. We provided 80 for our children. We had a lot of kids, about half of our kids had perfect attendance. They enjoyed coming, they had a great time. Uh, of the children, we had 11 students in 16 days to pass the requirements, the RTA, Read to Achieve requirements. But most importantly, we had over 22 students to make significant growth from when they came in to the exit time at the end of our summer reading camp. Um, it was a wonderful experience. We look forward to next year, adding more things to it. Um, but anyway, I just want to thank those folks involved, and I would like to thank the board for your support, and Dr. Baldwin, for supporting our reading camp, visiting our facility at Southmacon. Mr. Bowles was a wonderful host at Southmacon Elementary. Um, everything worked. worked out very, very well, and we're just very pleased with the, the growth and that our kids have made this year.
Picture moment for me, was I've, I've met, I saw a parent among the children that attended, and she was describing to me that her child had gone from a non-reader to one, to, to this very thing, to one that enjoyed, insisted he wanted to read, so, how much better, how much better can he get?
If you looked at the Franklin Press, though, we had a raid, too, about our reading camp, that they were very happy.
Carol said our thanks to all, all the parties involved.
Yes, they were, they just, they torn it up, so.
And Mr. Chairman, I gotta say, they just did an outstanding job of making that a learning experience that was fun, and not in any way a few of those students, I think that was so important.
I had the players going on the final days, and I was amazed that when a child that apparently didn't like reading, every hand, whenever it came time to a child, did ask a question, every single student, their child would raise their hand, wanting to be called on to answer the questions, it just doesn't get any better than that, guys, so thank y'all, I think it was a wonderful success. Building grounds, emergency operations plan, Mr. Bell, Dr. Baldwin?
Mr. Chairman, this is something that we need to discuss in closed session.
Okay. That's what I thought, business, finance, Angie, fund redistributions for Franklin High School, do both of those?
Okay, the first one is a golf fundraiser, and they're just moving the money equally between the girls and the boys' golf account, and the next one is the cheerleading fundraiser, and they are taking part of that out, a little over eleven hundred dollars, and moving it into the J V cheerleading account.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Motion second, all in favor, so if I say an aye, aye, you oppose, so moved. Daniel, we'll put you on the spot, I understand, Dr. Bowles, you were on webinar today?
I was.
Concerning financials and budgeting, so could you just kind of give the board enough data on that?
Well, currently, we're in, um, continuing resolution number two, and they are discussing continuing resolution number three, continuing resolution number two expires August thirty-first, but they are discussing the fact that we could have number three that would end June thirtieth, twenty sixteen, which would mean we would go through this whole school year under fourteen, fifteen budget.
That's your media, apparently that sank in, from what you just said, free access, and I think they understand what you just said.
Angie, did they talk about that in terms of driver's ed?
Um, they did talk about driver's ed, and if you'll remember, in the recurring, it was not in the recurring budget for driver's ed, but if we continue, then that means we will still be required to provide driver's ed, but we will not be funded to provide driver's ed.
I was thinking of continuing with fourteen, fifteen budget, but?
Yes.
They said he didn't.
But, but we, they passed the continuing resolution.
The issue was that it was, fourteen, fifteen, it was funded with non-recurring dollars, so they made the decision last summer that it would be non-recurring after fourteen, fifteen.
So we're still required to provide it, and we were eligible to charge up to sixty-five dollars, which is what they stated.
They're talking about using the fourteen, fifteen budget, less the driver education and less.
They gave us that heads up last night.
Less the decision funded, too.
Yes, and the difference between the House and the Senate budgets are three hundred and forty million dollars, if anybody's interested in that difference.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Do you still have the three options for driver's ed?
Those options are on the table right now.
On this table?
Those three options, as far as I know, are still under consideration, Mr. Shields, and we're operating under the, uh, fourteen, fifteen budget, which meant that driver's ed funding was non-recurring for fifteen, sixteen, we still have, we're still legislating that the school system will provide it, but we must provide it with the funds available. I think that they've given indication that they would allow us to charge the full amount, that would be the only difference, currently, we can only charge sixty-five dollars, they would allow us to charge the amount up to, um, what the program actually costs us, and, um, you know, the way that I would look at that is, we would just simply try to make up the lost funding from the state, which was a hundred ninety-two per pupil.
Now, some counties that have not, that don't wave the driver's ed, go on hold, will they have to bring it back in?
As long as it's mandated, and it, they're required to provide it, they'll have to all figure out how to bring it back in, they, they put it on hold pending some resolution in the state budget, and if they don't resolve it, and say, yeah, they, they'll have to catch it up.
So what, so we're looking at, it's over, between sixty-five and a hundred ninety-two dollars per pupil?
Yes. So around three hundred students, basically, the three hundred, uh, three hundred students in the ninth grade issue, that's what they're facing.
Our allotment that we typically, typically get from the states around eighty thousand off, seventy-five to eighty thousand off.
Charge up to sixty-five, and, and the way that we've been operating is that with, in addition to that eighty thousand dollars of state funding, we've been adding about twenty-five thousand dollars to local funds, so, so we'll be losing out a hundred ninety-two and add two, twenty-five dollars per pupils.
What, your dollar speaks, if you don't get driver's ed, you don't get teacher assistant money this year, because of the continuing resolution, what's the budget difference about those funds?
They did say that the only difference would be, because in the fourteen, fifteen budget continuing resolution, they had increased it by the enrollment, so that would be the only addition that we would see, is enrollment, increasing enrollment.
It works out to about two or seven million thousand dollars for teacher assistants, and about roughly a hundred thousand dollars in state and local funds for driver's ed from us, um, now, what we've done to this point, though, is we've paid for the worst, and, and, but, what I mean by that is, if you recall last year, third grade teacher assistants were funded up non-recurring dollars, so we anticipated that we would not have funding for third grade teacher assistants, now, the Senate budget, which is the worst case scenario, is the one that, that the general center decides to go with, that would fund, uh, us and a number of teacher assistants, about twenty-six to make them come, as of right now, we have twenty-six teacher assistants, now, if the House budget wins in the compromise, then we'll be looking at hiring some teacher assistants, uh, around August the thirty-first, if the budget ends on August thirty-first, if the Senate budget wins, we'll be looking at hiring teachers at that time, their proposal is to reduce class size by hiring more teachers at K three, so, we're, we're, uh, in a difficult spot, because school starts next month.
Mr. Shields, do you have another question?
You've got three hundred students.
Roughly.
Roughly. Do they project, what percentage of those students, of all three of them, that they don't take driver's ed, do they give a projection of numbers of what they'll give you money for, or they give you for three hundred?
No, they, they, they give us a hundred ninety-two dollars based on that A D and that projected A D.
That three hundred?
Yeah, and, and what's important to note about that, Mr. Shields, is that when we start trying to figure out how much that's gonna cost us this year, we know it's gonna cost us still about eighty thousand dollars, it's gonna cost us, we're gonna have to have the, uh, maintenance of the vehicle, we're gonna have to pay the driver's ed instructor and all that, but when we start charging up to two hundred dollars per student, a hundred ninety-two dollars per student, I know that we're not gonna have a hundred percent of those three hundred students paying a hundred ninety-two dollars, which means more of our local money is gonna have to go, of course, paying that local, that driver's ed instructor, and for the maintenance and fuel costs, and that's it. When we start charging a hundred ninety-two dollars per child, we're not gonna have three hundred that will pay that hundred ninety-two, I'd say that we're gonna have, we'll be lucky to get fifty percent of, of those three hundred students to enroll in driver's education, and we've got a number of them already in the pipeline, and, um, the most we can charge them is sixty-five dollars, so we know that we're losing money on all of those dollars, if they choose not to fund driver's ed.
You're talking about, you know, probably a year from now, is one of the other things that we could get, where the students might have to pay a hundred ninety-two?
No, the way the legislation is currently written, um, it depends on which, which one they decide, one's a Senate proposal, is that the community college would pick it up, another Senate proposal, they'll do completely away with it, the House proposal would be for, um, us to continue providing driver's ed, but they would fund it through, uh, registration fees and unclaimed borrowing proceeds, so, I guess, going back to your first question, is that based on what we know right now, we will not be providing driver's education, we won't have to worry about the funding for driver's education in sixteen, seventeen, the House, if the House proposal wins, it's budgeted, if the Senate, if either one of the Senate proposals win, it'll either be with the community colleges, or it will, driver's education will be gone there. Clear as mud?
Starting to get mad, I think. We're just gonna have to do a good job when we finally find out, I guess, to really make the, the students and the parents really aware of the way that things still happen.
I think that's what we're trying to do.
Was there anything else, Angie? No?
No, they, somebody did ask what the biggest barrier was, as to why they couldn't come up with one, and they were not very optimistic on it being solved, resolved by August thirty-first, because the lady said that the biggest barrier was, they had not yet decided on what their biggest spending target was, so they've got like twenty-one point seven billion dollar range, and until they decide what subcategory, whether it be education, transportation, what, whatever subcategory to spend that on, that's, that's what's holding everything up.
They call it their spend, it's the number that they're willing to spend on everything, and they're not gonna touch anything until they come up with that number.
Now, one, you know, one of the proposals that Mike asked me this question today was about block grants, that's something that's floating around in the general center right now, and that's very concerning, um, for us, because the way that teachers are funded right now currently is through a position allot, the way that teacher assistants are funded is basically a block grant, they give us an amount of money, we're able to fund, have them in, uh, teacher assistants, we can out of that, and if you recall, they've been, uh, they've been saying that we, that we have teacher assistants funded at the K three level, but if you look at, for example, seven hundred fifty-two dollars per pupil, that works out to about fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars per classroom of students, so, teacher assistant by the state's, uh, documents costs us about thirty-two thousand dollars, uh, per classroom, so they're basically funding us at K three, half a classroom, or half a classroom, I don't wanna see us do that with a teacher.
Good news is they have stripped Medicaid out of it, which was a big sticking point, so maybe now they can talk a little bit more about this other stuff, they're gonna deal with it separately. Well, Speaker Moore says he thinks they'll have something August thirty-first, but we'll see.
He didn't say what year.
Yeah, exactly, he may, he may have meant twenty thirteen.
Anything else to start evolving, superintendent, I don't know if you had any events, kind of, for us?
I do. On, uh, tomorrow, Tuesday, August eighteenth, teachers will return, freshman orientation tomorrow night at Franklin High School at San Bien and Park Mall Center, on Wednesday, August nineteenth, we have a bus driver saved to me at eight-thirty at the Franklin High School cafeteria, Mountain View intermediate, we'll have an open house drop-in for four to six P M, also on a Monday night, Thursday, Highlands Open House, four to six, Iowa Valley, open house at six, East Franklin, open house at five-thirty, South Macon, open house at six, up to the J, open house at six, Macon Mills School, seventh grade orientation, eight to six P M, and then on August the twenty-fourth, students will return, September seventh, Labor Day, no school, and Monday, September twenty-eighth, the next, uh, school board meeting at the house.
First football game, Thursday night, J V against Ashville.
Mr. Shields?
Uh, also on August twenty-fifth, at Park Commanders at six P M, so have, somebody start that thing.
At six twenty-fifth?
Yes, sir.
At what time?
Six P M.
Okay.
Park Commanders, it's on Tuesday night, next Tuesday, week before morning.
Thank you for letting me remind me, I'm sure it's out there. Doctor, so Doctor Baldwin, anything else that you have, or, or, if, if, if that's working out, if not, then, Doctor, if you would please, give us a message, what we can do with, with.
Close session is the one in G S one forty-three, I R C two K one one eight, eight, formulate plans by local board of education relating to emergency response to incidents, the school violence, order formulated and adopted, school safety imposed, the school, certain plans by local board of education.
That would, that, as I understand it, would be all that we'll be doing, so, uh, here are motions going to close session at this time, and here a second. Motion second, all in favor, say an aye, aye, you oppose, so moved.